101. Oh, yeah, okay, you're from Fun Tree, right? Real quick, so we never ever really get together much, so can we just real quick go around the table and just talk? And just say what board you're on, just so everybody gets to know a face. So I'm Shane, I'm the mayor.
Nancy Ross, P and Z.
John Gill with ARB.
Jay Russell, P and Z. Rick Follin, Commissioner.
Andy Stewart, Town Manager. That's P and Z.
April Ryan, ARB.
Chris Keller, P and Z.
Erin Ryan, ARB.
Mike Saturday, Vice Mayor.
Zach Brown, P and Z.
Mike Willhead, P and Z.
Wade Postle, Attorney General.
Is that your first name? They all know me.
Stephanie Vellum, Attorney General.
Al Ramos, Commissioner.
Okay, so that's everybody who's serving. So we appreciate everybody serving. This is all of us are almost a voluntary capacity here. So, you know, thanks a lot for doing a great service to the town. So with that, at least you had to roll call, was it a roll call?
No, we just did it.
All right, great. See how I just did here for you? You're welcome. All right, Wade, it's all you.
Thanks so much, Mayor. Can at least if you if I'm bringing up the PowerPoint? Insurance. All right. Mayor, Commissioners, Board Members, good evening. My name is Wade Postle. I'm Managing Partner of the Post Law Center, your Town Attorney's Office. I'm board certified by Florida Bar and City County and Local Government Law. And tonight, we're going to be talking about a bunch of different topics, all relating generally to ethics, but all matters that relate to the work of your own people and commissions. We're going to be touching on four different subjects. First, the government sunshine law or open meetings law, the public records law, voting conflicts law, which is just part of Chapter 112 Ethics. We're not going to be diving into every little bit of the Florida Ethics Code here tonight. And then finally, we're going to do a little bit of training discussion on the rules about quasi judicial hearings, which every single one of your boards do engage in on a regular basis. So first off, I want to just note that this is not the four hour training that Town Commissioners have to take every meeting. Okay? With that, we end up going through a full hour on the sunshine law, a full hour on public records, and then two full hours on Chapter 112 Ethics. Gets into all sorts of other things that really get down in the weeds and so on. I may hit on some of those other ethics topics. The biggest thing I would mention with regard to ethics and in some of those more esoteric areas is to try to facilitate issue spot. Basically get to the point and say, ah, this sounds like something Wade vaguely mentioned. Let's pick up the phone and call the town attorney's office. It's really the best way to deal with a lot of things. So another thing I wanted to mention at the beginning, I'm going to be working through these slides here. I generally don't like PowerPoint, but it's useful when you're presenting a lot of information. We have copies of the PowerPoints here with you with the summaries of the information. We're going to be going over if you want to jot down in the notes or remember what we talked about. And of course, you can take these home for yourselves and for your reference. One thing I do want to mention, please, if I'm going through and you have any questions, please do not hesitate to stop. All right? I may sometimes say, oh, I'm going to cover that in two slots. Or it may be some of the questions I tend to get aren't going to be in my full deck here. They would be in my four hour deck or what have you. And we can zero in on some of those things. But I find that asking questions when you engage with material with stuff like this, they help people internalize what we're going to be talking about a lot. So before we start, let me ask, who in the room has been through any sort of training on any of these subjects? Sunshine law, public records, voting conflicts, quasi judicial, anytime in the past? All right, let me get it right, the other one, who has not been through anyone like that? All right, very good. So be taking it on the assumption of a mixed craft, folks who have heard about all these things, obviously, and serving on any of those, but hopefully be able to fill in some gaps and make you feel more comfortable type of things you're supposed to be dealing with as you do your good work. So we are going to be starting off with the government sunshine law for open meetings. Sunshine law generally provides a right of access to certain governmental procedures. It applies this very, and finally, you'll hear me mention references, never name names, but different places all over the state where they do certain things certain ways and they've done weird things or what have you. We are city attorney for cities all over the state of Florida. And so we hear all sorts of wild things all the time. Here, for example, someplace you goes, oh, well, I'm not an elected board, so sunshine law doesn't apply. Absolutely not. Sunshine law applies equally to elected boards and appointed justices and other things. I might play on this, we'll put that a little bit. Any sort of elected or appointed board, sunshine law will apply to. The general rule is in all meetings of collegial bodies at which official acts are taken or public business is transacted or discussed, it'll be open and noticed to the public. Now, what the heck does that mean? We're going to break it down into a couple of different elements here, all right? The sunshine law applies to any meeting. We're going to define what a meeting is because there are going to be good meetings, there are going to be bad meetings. Bad meetings are meetings that don't comply with the requirements we're going to talk about for the sunshine law and thus get somebody in trouble. So any meeting between two or more members of the same board, very important. I get this question all the time. Ah, I'm on this board and so and so's on this board. We can't, and we're going to be talking about the same thing. It's going to be coming through us and then damn, or it's similar or what have you. That means we can't talk to each other about it, right? No, no, there might be other reasons. We'll talk about that a little bit when we get to quasi judicial. Other reasons why you might not have discussion between members of different boards on some subject or other. But when it comes to sunshine law, the rule is about members of the same board, all right? Talking about what? When discussing matters that may foreseeably come before that board. So what does this mean? It means you do not need to go run screaming the other way. If you see another member of the ARB or another member of the commission in public and you're going down the same mile, you do not need to run away from each other and, you know, be for fear of being seen together. You can talk about the weather. You can talk about the Florida games. You can talk about national politics. Probably you could talk about state politics, so long as it doesn't reach anything that's going on here. But when you start getting in and around anything having to do with the business of the town, and this, of course, applies most broadly to the town commission. The portfolio of the town commission encompasses basically everything. That would be the the policy decisions for the town. So your broad view on that would be from the town commission, anything relating to the town of Oakland, its governance, its business and what have, all right? And I genuinely recommend taking the broader view when it comes to your own, your decisions on your own behavior, on how you deal with the sunshine law. Because, as I will point out later, it is all fun and games until somebody gets a call from an investigator at the state attorney's office and your stomach will sink and that will ruin your entire year, even if it ends up being as perfectly fine and what have. I've been through innumerable circumstances around the state where you have folks that play fast and loose sometimes. We try to make sure not play fast and loose because they didn't know any better. But in any event, you get into situations where they're getting that call from an investigator with the state attorney's office wanting to know what they were talking about, this, that, or whatever, or what are these, this or that, or what have you. You never want to have that conversation, so it's best to stay far away from them. So even looking at our other boards, the planning board, ARB, what have you, anything that could foreseeably come before those, these subject matters that you do not want to have a conversation with any other member of that same board outside of a notice public meeting. That's what you'll, I'm sure you hear it all from here, you'll hear all over the state. Folks will say, hey, this is the only place we can talk about this, so we have to talk about this, let's talk about it. So you want to stay far away from it. One practical tip I will give you, get this all the time, folks will say, oh, yeah, well, if this real big controversial thing come through and we voted on it and now it's done. That means we can go out in the parking lot and chat about it all day long with two members of the same board, blah, 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 talk about this, talk about that, and we'll go down to the bar and talk, talk, talk about it. I will tell you, one of the most foreseeable things in government is that something that's been in front of your board or commission before, in one form, they very foreseeably end up back in front of your board in some other related permutation or process. So it is much better when it comes to town business than having anything to do with the business that comes before the board or commission you're on. Don't feel licensed to go chat about it with other members of the same board just because you just took an action on it and now that action's done. Because it would be very foreseeable that something else on a given subject matter may come around in the future. Now, certainly back around to our first piece of our definition, any meeting. So do there good meetings and bad meetings, right? So good meetings, these are the last two. Town commission or board meetings or workshops that will satisfy all the requirements we're about to talk about. Then we have other things that constitute under the sunshine law meetings, but they're not good meetings, they're bad meetings. Why? Because they're not going to be able to satisfy the requirements we talk about, we're going to talk about in there. So the telephone call or text messages between members of the same board about a matter that may foreseeably come before that board. Now, does this mean if one member of the town commission texts, texts the mayor or another member of the town commission saying, hey, I'm going to be five minutes late or I have flat tire, I'll be there soon or whatever, is that a sunshine law violation? Absolutely not. Okay? We're talking about matters of substance coming before the board, not this bits or whatever. But discussing business, whether it's getting on a telephone call outside of a notice public meeting that satisfies all the requirements we have, or texting back and forth between members of the same board about matters that may foreseeably come before the board, that is going to be a meeting, it's not going to be able to satisfy the rules or the requirements we're about to go over, that's going to be bad. Same thing, emails or written correspondence back and forth, all right? Where you get into a, well, I believe this, although I disagree, I believe this, all right? We're talking a little bit about Facebook and Facebook is horrible for this. It creates all sorts of issues that are best to avoid for members of boards subject to sunshine law. Finally, informal discussions or deliberations. This is not just situations where a couple of members of a board decide to, they're going to set up their own bank meetings that's outside of a notice public meeting, the town commission, and like that, that happens every once in a while. Those people end up getting prosecuted real quick. It lists all cities for the either, stay away from that, where they end up having meetings that are called and anything like this and what have. We're not talking about just that. We're talking about what we call parking lot deliberations or anything like this. And this is where you're chatting on the way out. I'm not saying members of the same board can't chat on the way out. Absolutely they can't. They could talk about, as I said, the weather, Florida gators, what's going on, you know, here, there, whatever, their kids, your travel plans and stuff. But no, and it's a great temptation. No chatting about matters that may foreseeably come before that board between two or more members of your same. Why are these bad meetings? Because they're not going to be able to satisfy these three straightforward and easy to satisfy requirements. Sunshine law requires three meetings. Meetings of public board or commissions must be open to the public. We're going to talk about what that means in just a second. Two, reasonable notice such meetings must be given. And three, minutes of the meetings must be taken, properly recorded, and open to public inspection. Before we talk about the first one here, I want to point out that word reasonable. You're going to see that a lot in all this tonight. It's a slippery lawyer word. You find it all through the sunshine law and the courts law and all sorts of other things. It's going to mean things are going to shift around based on the circumstances, all right? So actually, let's talk about that. Reasonable notice meeting being given. Give you two excerpts. We had a situation like, say, we didn't, did we do an emergency declaration this time around? No. Let's say the, that storm or hurricane had veered a little bit differently and we thought it was going to, you know, plow right through West Orange County, what have you, and it was found to be advisable, you know, we ought to do a, an emergency declaration beforehand for all various reasons, including payment reimbursement and so on. And so a meeting is put together kind of quickly, right? And you give, say, a day's notice, all right? A day's notice for an emergency meeting just to do an emergency declaration because hurricanes bearing down is perfectly reasonable. One day's notice to notice a meeting to, you know, pass some land use change that could have been done anytime and there's no emergency to it or anything like this, this is not going to be reasonable. Probably also going to violate a bunch of different statute order requirements, but something that is not an emergency, having a meeting noticing on a very short period of time is not going to be reasonable. So we're going to talk about meetings being open to the public in a second, but just to reiterate here, advisory boards, all right? So I mentioned before, elected boards, appointed boards. But even, let's say we have an appointed board that's just advisory. It doesn't make any final decisions at all, right? All it does is make recommendations to somebody else. Your advisory boards are also subject to the sunshine law just as much, even if their decisions are not binding, all right? Now, there are some exemptions to the sunshine law. There are very few. And they can only be created by a board of legislature by two thirds of eleven. It's very difficult. There is not, I want to say this exact sentence about once a month for my, most of my last 20 years of practice in local government law. There is no, I don't want to talk about this in public exemption to the sunshine. There is not a blanket, this would not be cool to talk about in public exemption. Apparently, there is in a number of northern states. I've heard from people who've moved down to Florida and they'll say, oh, we'll just have an executive session and we just don't want to talk about it in public. Apparently, other places you can do that, not in Florida. The most common exemptions that we deal with at the city or town level be litigation strategy or settlement negotiation meetings and collective bargaining strategy meetings if you have collective bargaining with unions. Thing to keep in mind, even with the litigation strategy one, something that, and that's only going to be with, say, the town commission, all right? And it's only going to be when you've got pending litigation, very discreet circumstances, and that is not even a great exemption. Because even though it's closed for the time being, you actually have to, you have to go through a whole kabuki dance to set it up right, and you have to have a court reporter in there. And then once that litigation is all done, either you win or lose or it settles, the transcript of that becomes public. We just remind people in these litigation strategy sessions, don't call the people on the other side bad names because it's a mirror of the dead. These people hold the tongue, even those that Sunday it's not coming out. Now, we talked about members of the, if the sunshine law governs meetings between two or more members of the same board, right? What happens when other people get involved? There's other human beings other than just those two, all right? Sunshine law is very clear that a board member or a member of a sunshine body prohibited from discussing board business with staff or non-board members. So to this point, I also hear it all the time, people say, oh, I'm subject to the sunshine law, which means I can't talk to anybody in the public about, you know, something that's coming up or I can't, whatever. So I don't know, I'm not ready for that. Again, there might be reasons under the law related to quasi judicial hearings where it would be not a good idea to talk about certain things for certain hearings. We're going to talk about that a little later in the presentation. But from a sunshine law standpoint, it's not the sunshine law that would stop you from talking to, you know, random person on the street, they asked a board member or commissioner's opinion on something. But the problem becomes when individuals end up being used as a liaison or conduit between two members of the same board to pass information, to pass back and forth. This is completely contrary to sunshine law and against the law. Couple of things I want to note. One, the sunshine law governs the members of the board, public officials. Now, the town commissioners, I'm sure internalize their public officials, but for each of you board members, you are also a public official. You have signed away some of your First Amendment rights by voluntarily getting audited, all right? It's been litigated over and over again, folks have, oh, the First Amendment says I can talk to whoever I want, so I can go talk to another member of the same board and tell them how I think and we can chat about it as soon as we can. Courts say, no, no dice. Nobody forced me to be on that board. This is, this is the deal. When you get on that board, you've acceded to the idea that you're bound by the sunshine. But random members of the public, they cannot get in trouble for the same things that board members can get in trouble for. So that's something I want to suggest to each of you to watch out for. And I'll tell you, in my experience, it's almost never malicious. But members of the public, you know, don't know how all this works. They may not know they're doing anything, all right? But if folks come up to you and start either asking you about how you think about an issue, how you're going to vote about an issue, and along with that indicate in any way to you that they are planning to learn that from you and then try to share it with other board members? One, or two, they come to you and say, start to tell you, hey, board member so and so is in favor of blah, 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 or this thing that's coming up with the agenda next, whatever. Board member so and so's in front of them. In either of those circumstances, I advise you in the strongest terms, as quickly as you can interrupt them. Tell them, timeout. I can, I'll talk to you about this issue, but I can't talk about what other people are going to do and other people on the board are thinking or what they're going to do. I don't want to hear it. I don't want you to tell it, all right? You do not want to be anywhere near that type of conversation. Talking to somebody about how you think? Fine, but if they intimate to you or suggest to you, you're trying to find it out so that they can go share it with other board members, I strongly suggest staying away from that as well. You don't want to be anywhere near this. It's like the old Christmas gift, fun and games until you shoot your eye. You know what I'm saying? You do not want to have anything to do with any circumstance like that. Now, just an example, because it's very often you're in situations where staff, whether it is town manager, town attorney, or other staff, might be talking to multiple members of the board, right? Multiple members of the commission. Very important to note, staff can serve in that role to pass notes back and forth between members of the same board. So don't look for it. Staff in the town are well attuned to this fact and will not be doing it, okay? Just this and aside, this is commonly where I throw in the side on this about talking with staff. As you all know, the town, in the town charter, is structured in a way that you find your most municipalities are with non-interference provisions. So in particular, and I know this is just a reminder for every, everybody, anybody that's this, having a commission and otherwise, we have non-interference provisions in the charter. You have individual commissioners, individual members of boards or whatever, giving direction to staff or giving direction to the town manager, manage, giving orders to the town manager or all this, these are things that are all contrary to the non-interference provisions. Going back, what I mentioned before, Facebook. It comes to sunshine, Facebook is not the prime. This does not mean, yeah, delete your Facebook, yeah. It's not mean you can't talk on Facebook. And when I say Facebook, this applies just as equally to, what do we call these ones? Instagram, Twitter, X, any way where folks are getting online and communicating. But the bottom line, without going into the weeds of all of it, is if there is a social media post, right, on some subject that that relates to a matter that may foreseeably come before the board you're on, all right? I'm not going to categorically tell you you're not allowed to post on it, although that would be infinitely safer for you, all right? But what you absolutely cannot do, this is going to sound unfair, understand? But as we say, think it's unfair, drive two hours north and then drive two hours west. You have to talk to them, tell them about it. If you're in a situation and somebody else on your same board has chimed in on some thing on a Facebook post, saying, yes, I'm totally against this, this is bad, blah, 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 blah. My legal advice to each of you is do not post on that same thread saying, I disagree. I am all for this. See what's happening there? Now you're having a conversation in texts, in Facebook posts, between two or more members of the same board on a matter that may foreseeably come before that board outside of a notice public meeting, all right? And you don't want to be anywhere near any problems along these lines. I know it feels like it hamstrings people. I know it sounds unfair, completely get it. These are the implications of all these things. None of these laws will have been put together with Facebook. And this is just how the courts and the Attorney General's Office has applied all this over the years. Now, we talked about one of those requirements being that meetings have to be open to the public. This is generally, his location has to be accessible to the public, has to be, the meeting space has to be of adequate size. You can't distribute it again, discriminate against or restrict access to the public. All right? So there are Attorney General's opinions dealing with situations in the past where where they give advice that generally meetings of your sunshine laws cannot be held in private homes. This sounds obvious, you can imagine in much smaller towns, even than Oakland, you know, there might be a, you know, proclivity to that. Or in restaurants where you're an attendee, you may feel compelled to order a meal. So what, what this means is the situation, there's not a blanket prohibition in a given instance if you were traveling with space that happens to also be a restaurant, if somehow there was a public meeting there. But if you're in the situation where you're in a room and you're having a meeting subject to the sunshine law and then everybody can order a meal there, the Attorney General's Office rounds them that exact way. And of course, you know, this law used to be, oh, it's all well and good, you know, this is, this is easy to do and so on. This requirement is the requirement that of course gave us all fits back during COVID. So we have to get like more creative and not just here in the town, but, you know, everywhere around the county and throughout the state in dealing with ways to nevertheless satisfy these requirements, not in the same way we would. We did have all the COVID stuff going on, but doing our best to satisfy all those requirements. One important point to keep in mind, and I do understand this happens from time to time here, boards are allowed through the Um, boards are allowed to adopt rules and policies to ensure orderly conduct. But the sunshine law does not allow uh, boards to ban non-disruptive videotaping, tape recording, or photography at public meetings. So if you have someone who is non-disruptive, they're not taking pictures, they're going to set up a video camera or, you know, audiotape the whole thing and so on, the sunshine law mandates that you allow that so long as it's not disruptive. And for one time, I was in general counsel for the Nellis County Charter Review Commission, maybe nine years ago. I go over there, we're going to this big meeting all in one of their community centers. And this very professional equipment's getting loaded out and, and put up and all this stuff. And I was talking to one of the staff people with Nellis County, I was like, what is that? Nellis County, you know, video service, media services or whatever. Oh no, that's just a citizen group. All setting up. Now, mind you, this was before every one of us had one of these in our pockets, but they were setting up all this stuff. Streaming it out online, the old school way, but have to allow. Now, we talked through those uh, three requirements before. These are the traditional requirements. Open to the public, reasonable notice minutes taken from the quarter of the public inspection. Back in 2013, still feels new to me, but it's been over a decade now. The legislature added a fourth requirement to sunshine. It's a right to public comment, all right? The basic requirement is that members of the public should be given a reasonable opportunity, there's that word again, all right? Reasonable opportunity to be heard on a proposition before a board of commissioners. Now, I'll tell you, this actual statute is pretty meat sauce. What I mean by that is, um, before the statute was in, in existence, it was the uniform practice everywhere around the state on matters that came before any board. Somebody wanted to say something about it, they get up and say something about it. And then they said something about it and it's done, all right? Apparently somewhere, somebody got it, so they passed it along. But the statute itself is pretty weak. And I don't recommend doing things as minimally as the statute suggests you. Uh, the, the bare minimum that sets it up. Uh, so the opportunity to be heard on a given uh, item doesn't have to occur at the same meeting at which the board of commissioners takes official action on the proposition. If the opportunity occurs at a meeting that's during the decision-making process in reasonable proximity for uh, the meeting in which the board is. So yeah, something that was going through with so many different meetings on something. Hypothetically, you could, if you let people speak at some of the other meetings beforehand, when you get to the final meeting, um, the board might say, hey, we've talked about this many times, we're not hearing any more public comment. I strongly recommend against that. That is not going to make you any friends with anybody at all. And you're only going to get screaming and wailing and gnashing teeth. The other thing about this, it is deceptive because most decisions, particularly for the town commission of any importance that are going to be made, have additional public hearing requirements, okay? Public hearing requirements include the right for those, the very moment you're taking the action or the very meeting where you're taking the action to get up and speak. So this could not be a blueprint on, oh, we can ramp back letting people talk. This is, this would be a bad idea. This is, you're just at a very low minimum. For I guess cases that never allowed people to speak about it.
Yeah, that could apply if you were having a work session that weren't really having the public speaking. They're going to follow the session, you were.
You're exactly, that's, that's, that's a very good example. One example, yeah, that is. One example where uh, where you might say, hey, look, we're not going to have the public comment right now. Is if you're having a workshop or work session where it was just for the uh, members of board of commissioners to hash things out and so on. And say, hey, look, we're going to have all sorts of hearings on this later on. This is just here for us to be able to talk it out. This is not what we set the time we're going to have public here. So that, that is a uh, a situation where that would be totally in line with this. Um, and I would suggest probably in line with practice of city streets. Important point, uh, every once in a while you have folks who know about this law and then they select to read just parts of it and so on. And they'll think that because they've read public comment that, you know, all the rules, you know, take the Barbado or they can do whatever they want, wherever they want and so on. A, a board of commissioners, in particular, uh, the chair and uh, and then ultimately the board as a whole um, can uh, maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum during a meeting. And uh, it expressly permits uh, setting up rules that provide the basics of what you see at most of your meetings. I want that's where individuals can address the board, uh, prescribing designated uh, specified time periods for public comment. So not just bursting in whenever or what have you. Uh, procedures, what, what factions, what have you, where you can say, hey, look, you guys want to, you know, let somebody come up and speak over a couple more minutes, you can handle the whole thing. You're allowed to clean bill, do a deal and so on. Um, so there's still a lot of latitude for uh, for that to be managed in a given manner. Now, talked about what the requirements are in sunshine law, things to stay away from. Why do we comply with some of them? Obviously, we want to follow the law, but they are penalties. Member of a board of commissioners, a state agency, or authority of the county municipal uh, corporation, political subdivision, knowingly violated sunshine laws, guilty of a misdemeanor in second degree. Uh, I can't tell you how many times I've actually heard this in, in place routes. It's just a misdemeanor or whatever. As I said, it's all fun and games till you get that call from an investigator at the state attorney's office. And all of a sudden, being investigated for a second degree misdemeanor will feel like the biggest thing in the world. It's not something you can be anywhere near. Even an unintentional violation can be prosecuted as a non-criminal infraction with a simple penalty of up to $500. And I assure you, writing the $500 is the worst part of that. It's the embarrassment of getting it. So, yeah, I'm safe. In addition to penalties for the individual or individuals, the officials who uh, participated in violations of sunshine law. There are penalties for the government, all right? Sunshine law provides no resolution rule, regulation, or formal action shall be considered binding except as taken or made in an open meeting. Yeah, that sounds reasonable, right? Go out and make the formal decision in the parking lot. Eh, instead of making it a year, you know, with all the requirements of the meeting, makes all the sense of, well, that's the finding, it's the parking lot, what have you. But you'll hear this refrain from me a number of times. The floor, the fourth Supreme Court has taken a run of this. It was another that you'll talk about. And they have extrapolated this to mean sunshine law can be construed to evade or to frustrate all invasive devices. And so courts can hold an action that was taken in violation of sunshine law. Even if it wasn't as extreme as, oh, we held a meeting out in the parking lot, you know, before the meeting or what have you. It can render that decision that was made void of an issue. It means void from the beginning, okay? Wipes it out. So the advice I give to folks who, I've heard this from time to time, and quietly, never in a group set. But uh, the advice I give to folks who would feel tempted of this decision is so important. I, I, I just have to make sure other folks are going to be on board with me to make sure it comes out the way I want it to come out. Violating sunshine law to accomplish that is a very quick and straightforward way to make sure you're going to get the exact opposite of the results you want. Because now you're giving opponents of the results you want, an easy tool to beat that decision and beat the government about the head and shoulders with a violation. Any questions on sunshine? All right, we're going to move on to the public records law. So the public records law, Public Records Act provides the right of access to records state and local governments, as well as instantly private entities acting on their behalf. You got to fix really complicated, you won't get into that today. But um, this right of access to public records actually has origin in the Florida Constitution, same as the sunshine law. Okay? Uh, they both come out of Article One, Section 21 of the Florida Constitution. And the public, uh, the public record requirements of that uh, provision of the Constitution apply to virtually all government uh, agencies, entities at the state level and local level. You know, all three branches of government, it's implemented in different ways at the state level and different branches. Um, sometimes filed differently, but nevertheless, um, and the only exceptions you can have in the Public Records Act are those established in the Constitution or by law, talking about some of those. So we have in chapter 119, this is the Public Records uh, Act, uh, chapter 119. We have a definition of public records. Public records define including all documents, papers, letters, maps, books, tapes, photographs, films, sound recordings, data processing software. This is the 1970s legislature trying to imagine, okay? We're literally writing this in the 1970s, they have not owned it. Data processing software, which doesn't mean what you think it means. It encompasses all of the crazy stuff. Or other material regardless of the physical form, characteristics, or means of transmission. Made or received pursuant to law or ordinance or in connection with the transacting official business by any agency. Now, want to just give you a couple of things to feel a little bit better about the world and, and public records acts, the urban mess I tried to dispel. Um, remind you, town commissioners have town commission email, right? Do courts, uh, other board members do? Okay. So this is in particular, uh, the other board members, all right? Uh, although it applies to the town committees as well, when that was said. Um, when you all get emails, or we'll talk about emails in the Public Records Act. You get an email that relates to town business in your email address. Getting that email does not infect your whole inbox. It does not turn your whole inbox into being uh, all open for inspection by anybody who wants to see your emails with your investing or, you know, your receipt or something you bought, you know, by email or anything like that. Absolutely does not infect your whole inbox or anything. Individual emails that you receive relating to town business however, are going to be public records. We're going to talk about all this. Same thing for town commissioners. Uh, reason we have town commission email addresses is to keep all that, make it like nice and easy. Keeping all those, on those emails, when somebody happens to know your personal email address and emails you want that address about town business, it does not infect your whole inbox. That one email, however, is going to be a public record. Now, it's a test. We're going to apply this test at least once here for a common question I get. Uh, to figure out what this definition really means in practice. Florida Supreme Courts interpreted that definition to encompass all materials made or received by an agency. We're talking about what that word agency means here. It's like, in connection with official business that are used to perpetuate, communicate, or formalize knowledge, all right? Remember that, we're going to go back to that in a second. Apply this. Now, notice says you're made or received by agents. Okay, great, that's easy. It's the town, right? Town's an agency, that's how we would think about it. So it's, it's uh, you know, records the town receives. Well, there's a wild definition of agency in chapter 119. The town is an agency, all right? But each town official, i.e. each town commissioner and each member of the board, right? Each staff member of the town is also an agent under the definition. It's a wild definition when you look at it. The point being that when you individually receive emails that relate to official business of the town, those are public records, okay? Armed with public records act, these all subject materials regardless of whether they are in final form. It's important, I get that a lot. Folks will say, oh, well, uh, you know, I haven't uh, issued the final version of this, so that could have been wrong. Okay, the version that you have right now is, uh, you know, if the record that exists, if it's responsive to what's. Now, there may be some exceptions to that based on those uh, three criteria I mentioned before. But um, the basic rule is uh, all these materials are open for public inspection unless the legislature has exempted them from disclosure. Very similar to what I said before, and I say this even more often, the uh, sunshine law, uh, matter, there is no, this is really embarrassing, exempted in public records. Business made. Is it all saying we have in politics at the University of Florida? Don't put anything in writing you don't want to see on the front page of the outlet. The alligator's the student newspaper at the University of Florida. Be very mindful, this is a lot harder with email or Facebook or whatever. Be very mindful of what you put down in writing relating to town business. And you put that down, it's going to be a record that we have certain obligations to, certain obligations to preserve and make available for inspection and top, right? Now, there is, I forgot to bring it, darn, just going to bring it. There's a whole book put out by the attorney general's office that provides a good summary of all the different exemptions in Public Records Act, nice and thick. But you can go digging through there all day long and you won't find the man or the woman to turn this over, this is the worst exception in sunshine law. You will find in there things like law enforcement officers or other uh, employees, certain other employees' uh, addresses, telephone numbers, dates of birth, the uh, what schools they, uh, children, their children go to, things like this. Social security number, obviously, bank account numbers, protected health information the town may have for somebody's active criminal investigative intelligence information, uh, security systems, information and plans. Thankfully, this also now includes cybersecurity, uh, information and plans. It didn't for local governments for a number of years. Which was incredibly scary, but the legislature fixed that. And then big responses for a limited time. As I alluded to before, email messages made or received by public officers or employees in connection with official business are public records and subject to disclosure in the absence statutory exemption. So, um, if any member, for example, of, of the board, all right? Uh, receives an email from the public about, say, a matter that's coming up before uh, your board, you know, some agenda, some, some, I'm for this, against this, or that. That email is going to be a public record, all right? What does that mean? It means there are some duties to preserve it and make it available for inspection. And that's very cumbersome for a bunch of folks, you know, who are volunteers in these boards to manage all that in, in long term and so on. So at least I was going to ask you to remind me how we handle it. Typically, in a lot of our, in a lot of our jurisdictions, if members that don't have town email addresses get emails like that, you want them forwarded somewhere so they can be retained, right? Yes, fantastic. Just wanted to confirm that. So uh, you've probably heard it before, but uh, if you get any emails for, against, whatever, about matters that are, that are coming before um, your board, go ahead and forward them onto a lease. Once it's on to a lease, it's in the town computer systems and you don't have to worry about it anymore, all right? The town clerk is the custodian of public records for the town. Send it on and you can put it out of your hand, all right? And you do not need to send on to get emailed an agenda from the town. Any emails from the town are already be retained by the town, so you don't have to worry about any of that town's name protection of that.
And, and just to reiterate what he was saying, when you send it, don't say like, this lady's crazy, you know? Because that becomes a public record as well. So just, just, just keep on.
Although they, they will be sent. So, yes. Go back to all the Facebook for a second. Facebook, uh, provides a breaking number when it comes to the public records. Because, uh, our obligations with public records are to see that they are retained so that they can be given out with response to a request for inspection or public, right? And what happens to go posting about official business on Facebook? And when the town on its official page posts on Facebook, we have it all set up in a way of your best, what Facebook set up, to be able to retain those matters there in case anybody came up with, so yeah, whatever. But when individual board members might post on Facebook about, or business, or what have you, this becomes a lot more trouble. Facebook is simply not set up to manage this well. I've seen innumerable problems run into, again, it's all fun and games until somebody comes in and says, hey, I heard, uh, board member so-and-so paid, posted such-and-such on Facebook about item such-and-such that's coming up next week. I wanna see it. Okay? And then you get into the whole regular rule of tracking it down, hoping somebody didn't get embarrassed that they posted it and deleted, all this. So, again, take this as a precautionary, uh, bit, be very mindful of what you're posting concerning official business on Facebook. It potentially is gonna create public records issues. Yeah. This is a question I get so often from folks that I put in a slide years ago, part of this. What is not a public record? Fair example, uh, since all of us, hey, what about brief notes? What do I mean by this? I mean, literally like, we're getting sticky pad, right? A little, uh, we in sticky pad, where you jot down, things you wanna remember, you're gonna say in the air, right? Because we're human and our brains are, you know, not perfect and we don't remember everything. So it's just little notes to yourself for a very short period of time to remember this. The Attorney General's Office has opined that brief notes to yourself designed for personal use to jog your memory and not to be shared, kept personal, do not satisfy the elements of a public record, so therefore aren't a public record. Why? Because those notes don't communicate, perpetuate, or formalize knowledge. Now, I'm gonna give you a, I'll give you two camera examples that'll be, should be, uh, helpful. I have a number of commissioners, number of council members in, uh, some cities where we're city attorney, that they are voluminous note takers, okay? That's perfectly fine, that's how some people think, is they read something and they're taking notes and outlining it, what have. I always have to, uh, warn, uh, those commissioners that when one commissioner, one city, you would literally get an RFP and sit there and write out eight and a half, two pages of notes about each respondent to an RFP. Fantastic, very, you know, very diligent, very what have. I warn them, be very mindful that in the very offhand that somebody decides, I wanna take a look at that, those very long detailed notes are probably going to be, after I take a look at them, probably gonna end up being a public record. So be mindful what you're writing down. Don't say, geez, this guy's an idiot, why did they even stop? That's not gonna come off well when it's printed in the local or online or what have. Uh, so be mindful of that. Another war story, I'll tell you very quickly, not named in use where this is, far away from here. But, um, this is a good little lesson for the sunshine law too. Situation where I was there sitting as the city attorney that night, there was, uh, very contentious land use issue, alright? Very contentious, very heated, uh, the whole, you know, the whole, um, meeting rooms filled with folks, people on both sides, very, very hot and bothered about it. Boat comes right near the end of the meeting, boat comes and the, uh, motion passed to approve some project, what have you, but it was a divided vote. Again, right near the end of the meeting, after the vote, one of the members of the city council in this city, put the sticky note, it was up on the dais, wrote something. This is on an elevated dais, cameras running, room full of people, everyone can see what people are doing up on this dais. And this council member pretty ostentatiously handed the note to another council. Alright? Okay, so the meeting gets done, just minute or two later, and there was a gentleman who was a local blogger, a cat fly, have whatever you wanna, you know, call this, very interested in stuff and would, would come and ask for my appointments. He made a peeline right to where these two council members were and said, I wanna see that note. Alright, now, first of all, let's rewind, we're talking about public records now, but let's rewind to the sunshine, alright? How does that communicating up on the dais by notes, uh, in front of everybody else? Not a good one in sunshine law, so. Alright, now, that note could have just said, hey, I need a bathroom, okay? A note passing saying, I need a bathroom break is not a violation of sunshine, alright? Um, but it doesn't look good to, to have any sort of, uh, communication, even if it could be innocuous, uh, up on the dais, it invites me particularly in a heated situation, right? This applies equally to whisper between members of the board and so on. Again, they could be whispering about something completely unrelated, but it looks. But so let's go back to the, uh, the Public Records Act here. The, um, note had been handed over, right? Or the note had been handed from one councilman to the other one, he said he wanted to see it right then, right? Our requirement for a public record is that every person who has custody of the public record should permit the record to be inspected and copied by any person desired to do so at any reasonable time, under reasonable conditions, there's that word again, right? And under the supervision, under supervision by the custodian of public records, the custodian says, alright? So, we're gonna talk about all the implications of this here, but I wanna mention this because we were talking about notes and the differences between those. So, it happens to be that when you have a little note that big and somebody's asking to not copy it, people have a right to copy it and they have a right to inspect it, alright? So it happens that a note that long, when you have the city attorney sitting right there to be able to review it for exemptions, reasonable is right then, okay? Well, the council member in that meeting started to freak out. Did not want this note to go anywhere, didn't want it shown to anybody and all this, like freaking out. And I had to say, give me the note. I looked at that, looked at the note, and then I let the guy read it, he took a picture of it, and the note said, you are going to regret that. Okay? Guess what ended up on the front page of paper the next day? That note, right? We have sunshine law problem? Yeah, I think that's very problematic and very lazy sunshine law, why? We've got communication, communication between two or more members of the same board about a matter that may proceeding to come before that board, remember what I said, matters that had come before the board, very reasonably could again, and that one was going to, okay? Because it was just at one stage in the process. And it was communicated literally in a note, not disclosed in a notice of public meaning and so on. But they wrote something down that they very much regret. Don't write down anything having to do with official business you don't want on the front page, but they did. So, that was just one application of this. Fourth, responding to, uh, public records requests is not always going to be immediate. The nice thing for everybody, uh, on commission or, uh, members of the boards is ultimately it's not going to be your primary responsibility to deal with that. So we have a records custodian for the town who handles, uh, public record requests and , uh, Elise is very, uh, well-trained and tuned with the requirements of the sunshine law concerning, uh, allowing authorities in the time under reasonable prejudice and under supervision. So law that goes into what we can chart or we're not gonna get into any of that now because it really doesn't directly touch what you have to worry about. But keep in mind, there is a lot, uh, going on in there that Elise is very well tuned. So, again, we comply with the Public Records Act, we won't be good to even put a file of law, but there are all sorts of repercussions for the town, for people individually, um, that, uh, we want to avoid. Person who's been denied a right to inspect or copy public records in the Public Records Act can bring a civil action against, uh, the towns and boards, the public records. We're not gonna get into all the details of this, but you said a problem years ago here in Florida, where, um, and I won't say it's completely gone away, but it's, it's mostly gone away. The problem was people going around trying to gin up public records violations, alright? Trying to make money. It's one of the things you can get when you sue a town or a city for a violation of the Public Records Act, is people can recover their attorney's fees. Now, there were some unfortunate circumstances where there were some folks, and it's not me saying this is a bunch of news articles all relaying that this is what had happened, that there were folks going around in cahoots with a various discreet number of attorneys who'd go around, walk up to random, um, uh, lawn maintenance folks for a town, make a public record request for somebody's bill in the water, uh, department, and they'd say, what, what are you talking about? No. And then run off and file a lawsuit. Or they would, um, come in to, you know, City Hall or what have you and start making all sorts of requests for random things, suspicious sounding things, things to try to elicit a violation even though they had no reasonable relationship to the information they're asking. Now, with the Public Records Act, you don't have to have some special interest in a piece of, uh, uh, in a public record to get that public record. If you end up suing over, or is going to, as required to in recent changes of the law, require you to look at whether or not you really had an interest in that or you were just trying to gin up a lawsuit. And they shifted a lot of things around so that if you are found by a judge who had effectively tried to gin up a lawsuit like this, the town or city can recover attorney's fees from the person doing it and the attorney. So, it has not gotten rid of all public records lawsuits. There are legitimate public records fights over certain things all the time, but the frivolous ones have greatly evaporated after recent changes. In addition, uh, court status provide, public officer knowingly violates the, uh, Public Records Act is subject to suspension, suspension, removal, or impeachment, guilty by misdemeanor in the first period, so more serious than sunshine law, alright? And again, there, you don't wanna be anywhere close to anything like this, so.
It's time to move away.
And you'll never have to worry about it again. Any questions on the Public Records Act? Fantastic.
Wait, I actually have a, a point that I would like to make that I, I think about. Um, so when you're thinking about, you know, you're sitting here at a meeting, there's cameras rolling, there's people watching, and you're thinking about, am I creating a public record? I would err against creating any records that you don't want to share with the public regardless of whether they are a public record or not. Because what happens if somebody wants to inspect your phone, they see you sending a text message, um, at a minimum, I'm going to stand up to them. Because I have to determine whether it is a public record. If I determine it's not and that you don't have to share it, we could end up in court. And then again, at a minimum, a judge will see it and opposing council will see it. So, it's not gonna stay private. And it could be a message to your spouse. It could be something that is intensely embarrassing for you. Um, so I recommend against cell phones on the dais, um, unless you really need to, just something that you keep in mind, I would highly recommend against embarrassing messages, uh, that you want to keep to yourself, even if they're not.
When you're sitting on the dais.
Yes, the cameras rolling and people watching.
And if you all recall, it's a number of years ago now, uh, historically, there's been some sensitivity here in Orange County. Um, I don't know if you all remember many years ago, there was, uh, this is a story I tend to tell in other counties other than Orange County, but, you know, what do you do? There was a situation many years ago where, where there, I won't get into the details, but where, among other things, it was visible on the record during a very contentious vote, uh, where folks were seen texting on the dais, members of the county commission. And this prompted exactly, uh, what Stephanie mentioned, all sorts of votes, wanting to inspect the phones, public record request for the phones and all this stuff. When you combine a heated, uh, subject matter and fooling around with your phone on the dais, you're potentially asked for trouble, so best to stay far away. Moving on to our next sub- subject, voting conference. So this is gonna be our main part of what we're gonna be touching on with, uh, Chapter One Twelve amendments. It's the, uh, piece that is most likely to, uh, come up for you all potentially among all the different things in, uh, Chapter One Twelve. And some of this is, uh, just talking random, some still get conflict, alright? And some of this is gonna be a lot of balancing, oh, it could be this or it could be that and so on. Like I mentioned in the beginning, this is about what we lawyers call issue spot, alright? Oh yeah, this is the type of thing I remember the way talking, gotta pick a opponent, okay? Um, so just try to internalize enough to be able to know, oh, I'm getting close to something that, that might be problematic here. We gotta talk through it and get a good view as to what we're good. So, voting conflict law is, uh, in Section One One Two Three One Four Three. Who does it apply to? Applies to public office persons elected or appointed to public office agency, including persons serving on an advisory body. Your member of a collegiate body applies to you. So, this is basically the exact same rule as the sunshine law, alright? It's going to be the town commissioner, it's going to be ARB is gonna be planned, right? Um, there are, don't think just because there's not, the voting conflicts doesn't apply to, say, staff or anything else, there are myriad other laws that deal with this, this and that about other contexts. This is in particular about conflicts concerning votes in front of the body that you are a member of. And it applies whether or not you're elected or appointed, and it applies even if it's just advisory. So again, same. Now, what is a voting conference? There are two main sets of provisions. Local elected or appointed officer may not vote on. Two things, we'll break up the second one in particular here. Third, any measure which would annuler to his or her special private gain or loss. Remember that phrase, we're gonna be digging into what it is. But any measure which would annuler to his or her special private gain or loss, or any measure which a public officer knows, knows the difference there. So we backed off a little bit, you gotta have a little bit of knowledge here, but they're gonna impute a lot of knowledge, uh, to you to tell me a key to that. Any measure which a public officer knows would annuler to the special private gain or loss of any of the following list of books. One, a principal by whom he or she is retained. What the heck's a principal? We're gonna talk about that in a second. It means a couple of different things. Second, a parallelization subsidiary of a corporate principal by whom the officer is retained. All this means is no getting sneaky or tricky saying, oh, they're not a principal, it's It's uh, it's owned by a holding company or it's held by a holding company's holding company or something like this. You can't sneak around it. Any measure which a public officer knows would annure the special private gain or loss of a relative. Alright, we're talking about what the definition of relative is. You dig deeper into this, you look through all of chapter one twelve. There are a bunch of different ethics regulations and each one has a different definition of relative. So I'm very narrow, so very broad. And relates to what is the. Finally, local elected or appointed officer can't vote on any measure which a public officer knows would annure the special private gain or loss of a business. Talk about what that is. So first of all, who or what is a principal? An officer on a board or commission, their principal is going to be their employer. Once, alright, so let's say you're on board. And your employer, actual company that employs you or in personal employment is coming for your board for some. That's going to trigger what we're talking about here, we're going to talk about what that means. So employer is one. Second, a client in a legal, accounting, some types of insurance gets very complicated or other professional practice. And this is one of the many situations where their client of yours and any sort of professional practice, they're coming before your board, you're going to want to pick up the phone and talk to the territory's office to talk through this issue. Because uh it gets really long. Third, a corporation for which an officer serves as a compensated director. This is dangerously rare, alright? So what we're talking about is a situation where you're on the board of directors for some company. You're not employed by them, but you're paid to be on the board of directors. This is a thing that exists, this doesn't happen with most folks, alright? Who is a relative? For voting conflicts, it is surprisingly narrow. Father, mother, son, daughter, husband, wife, brother, sister, father-in-law, mother-in-law, son-in-law, daughter-in-law. Who's missing?
Uncle and aunt.
Uncle and aunt, cousins.
Brother-in-law, sister-in-law.
Brother-in-law, sister-in-law, exactly right. There's a bunch of these where you can think of, wow, you're allowed to vote on that? We're going to talk about what you're allowed to vote on and that. Some practical advice based on the flip side of the voting conflict law. We're going to talk about one, which is basically a state requirement to vote in most circumstances. But the definition of relative is incredibly narrow, alright? And I used to get this in uh years ago, I was town attorney for the very little town of Pearson up in Volusia County. If anybody knows where Pearson is, it is literally one of these towns where if you blink, you will miss the one stop light. And you will miss one. It's up in northwest Volusia. And up there, man, they need this law better minded. They bust out with it and they'd say, Wade, you know, there's no cousin uh, you know, in that statute. Everybody's first and second cousin, everybody else. Everything would fall apart. So. They do it well. But um, so it's it's something we keep in mind, it is uh relatively narrow. Uh, but we'll talk in a minute about, you know, how probably we apply these things in practice versus what you can formally get in trouble on the floor with the board of issue matters. What is a business associate? Business associate is a person or entity who's carrying on a business enterprise with the public officer, regardless of the form of business, right? So they make this really broad to try to catch all sorts of different business related. The two key questions are, are they engaging in a common commercial or entrepreneurial pursuit? Two, is this a current, ongoing business relationship? This is really important. The business relationship does not have anything to do with the matter that's on the board, right? So let's say um somebody was, you were in a business relationship. Your business relationship, if somebody else will just assume you satisfied this. And uh business relationship uh has to do with your, you know, running uh store or supplies or what have you, you know, some other place in uh east Oregon. And they're coming through, doing a completely different business, or they're getting a rezoning on a piece of property so they can build a house or build something else, has nothing to do with your business with it. Irrelevant, alright? If you are a business associate of theirs, you're going to have a voting conflict, you're going to have to do what we we talk about here, alright? So voting conflicts can arise from being, you know, partners in a business, being uh substantial joint shareholders, being tenants in common in land held for investment that's going to be developed someday, even if it's a whole different part of the state. The county commissioner um, different part of the state, got trouble for that years ago where they completely forgot, it'd be nice to just forget land, you know? Uh, but they completely forgot that they owned with with somebody else a big piece of land way down in South Florida. And where they were was a completely different part of the state. They came to be in front of the uh, the county commissioner for a rezoning. You know, rezoning pass, now hold you there, rezoning pass unanimously, and this is the only person deciding vote. That's not the issue. The issue is, if you have a voting conflict complying with what we're going to have to do here, basics are going to be having to abstain from voting.
So just to expand on it, so. Okay, so they knew, they had to have known they had a relationship with this person.
That I'm 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 relaying only what that person, and this is a different place, a long time ago, what have you. I'm only relaying what that person said.
Okay, because any business relationship really exempts you from any interactions, so.
Not any interactions, voting.
Well, okay, voting.
And that that's what I said, we're talking about very discreet things and very discreet things. Um, in in the hypothetical, or it wasn't, in that scenario game there, um, what was said was basically, they forgot that they were that.
That they owned another person.
Yeah, apparently it wasn't that they forgot that they owned it, they forgot that this other person was.
All done and done.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So that's slightly understandable, you know, I suppose. But um, so we we talked about this phrase, you force special private gain or loss, alright? What the heck is this, the language talking about? Voting conflict law is not a law, but all situations, like the top, a gain or loss to the issue of the gain or loss has to be settled. Now, what do we mean by speculative? So actually, let me, let me say this more generally. Every single decision that each of you on the boards that's a small town like like Oklahoma is going to impact each of you, right? Not living in, not, you know, living in a different part of the state or a different, you know, different part of the county or anything like this. It's going to impact you all here. So every decision you make is going to impact you and your family. But that's not what we're talking about, alright? We're talking about things that are special private gain or loss, alright? So first thing about special private gain or law loss is that it's an economic, financial money. Get money for the value of land is going to increase or things like this. Economic benefit of harm that will anure to the officer, the relative, the business associate or the principal, alright? Now, how do you figure this out? What can be considered? This is where it gets complicated, why you pick up the phone and chat through uh with us unless it's quit still clear pieces. To figure this out, we look at what's the size of the affected class, alright? What's the relative benefit or harm compared to other members of the affected class? Is the gain or loss remote or speculative? And is it merely a procedural or preliminary procedural matter? When we uh look at special gain, depending on the size of the class, the smaller the class, the higher the chance we're going to look at that and say, yeah, that's going to be a special gain. If it's only going to be gained to one person or it's going to be a gain to, you know, just five people and you're one of them voting on it, you're going to have problems. Uh, vice versa, yeah, you look at it and you say, uh, yeah, I'm not getting anything special out of the classes, who's going to be affected by this is the whole town together, right? Then special private gain or loss to drop away. Um, looking at whether something is remote or speculative is uh going to look at whether or not uh uh it's going to look at the individual facts of each case. Basically, whether or not the action that's being taken by your board here on is going to, with absolute certainty, yield some economic benefit? Or I guess, yeah, there's some chance uh that it might happen if these three contingencies also happen and so on. Or you got here, oh, yeah, I guess you can hypothetically figure out if these fifty things will come together, which I don't have any control over, this is just one link in the chain to make it happen. As it gets more remote and speculative, it's less likelihood it's going to be considered something new voting conflict. Finally, question's going to be whether or not something is preliminary or procedural. Do we vote to approve minutes? Uh, or, yeah, okay, um, good, uh, that's almost universally done, but I just want to make sure. We vote to approve agendas at the beginning of meetings? No, no problem, yeah. Uh, so yeah, approve of minutes is is a good reason. Yep, um, you have a voting conflict on given thing, you do what we're about to talk about, which is abstaining, you do all the right things and so on. But then at the next meeting, it comes on through in the minutes from the last meeting um where you uh have voting conflict come through, you can still vote on those minutes. Alright, folks come in and say, this, and it really wouldn't be official. And it would, you know, you did it up. It does not talk, uh, the voting conflict law does not have anything to do with procedural or preliminary things. It's talking about matters of substance, not approving agendas or minutes or anything like this. Now, we go through that analysis, we find out, you have a voting conflict, what are you required to do? The officer must abstain from voting, alright? So you're not going to be voting on that item in that meeting. You have to disclose that conflict orally prior to the vote. You have to say aloud what the con- that you have a conflict and what the conflict is, alright? And third, you have to file, it may be within fifteen days, you can disclose in writing what the voting conflict was, alright? In addition, particularly for our appointed officers here, why the statute is written this way, I have no idea for a while, but in addition, appointed one or two officers must publicly disclose the conflict before participating in discussion of the matter. Now, let's tease out a couple of things here. One, if you have a voting conflict, technically, you're allowed to discuss that matter, you just can't vote on it. Now, if you are an appointed officer, you have to disclose it before you do that. For some reason, the legislature did not make it, or they made it so that if you're an elected official, you don't have to disclose it before, um, you don't have to disclose it before discussing, which means technically you could sit there and say, you know what, passing this rezoning is the most important thing ever for the city, that you've got to do this, and the whole discussion goes on. And then right before the vote, you go and say, oh yeah, by the way, um, my brother's going to make three million dollars uh when this gets rezoned, so uh he's he's myself. I do not recommend it, okay? Technically, apparently you're allowed to, not for elected officials, I would not recommend. In fact, the advice, and this is not a legal requirement, but the practical advice I will give you is, when a voting conflict is truly substantive, your brother is going to make three million dollars because of the zoning and what have you. It's probably best to just not say it. If something is truly a technical conflict, alright? Like you're employed by some big multinational corporation and it technically they're like, you know, power company or something like this, and they're coming before you on on what have you. And your job doesn't have anything to do with with any of that. You couldn't give a whip, you know, for the benefit of the power company or whatever is happens to be your employer, whether they get it or not, technically you have a conflict. Maybe you might say, look, I've got a conflict uh because they're my employer or whatever, so I'm not going to be voting on this. Maybe there it might be okay to to say something about, but exercise very cautious judgment. It doesn't play well for your brother's money, make a lot of money, and you're going to refuse yourself, but you're going to have to card on a given decision.
Excuse me again, would it be good then to always get with you before the meeting or and say, I think I might have a conflict or what? I mean, I can't imagine.
Even easier, so if you're looking at the past yet, right?
Right.
You see something that jumps out at you, you know, you can connect with her and then we can talk through it.
Yeah, I'm not aware that I'll have any of these situations, but I'm the person that asks questions, so. I would would love that, feel free to give people a call, we can talk about whatever your concern is and make a game plan and handle it.
But if we get to that agenda item and all of a sudden you go, oh my gosh, I didn't realize I knew this person was, make it up in the front of the room. Just say, you know what, we have a question. Stephanie will go up, talk you through it and then make a decision.
Okay.
Often times it. Shane and I have been in the development realm, you will see people that you work with on a regular basis that aren't on the agenda and aren't technically, they're they're not personally applying for whatever the zoning application is, but they, they'll come in with representation of people that we know.
Yeah, and attorneys and stuff, yeah.
But it's it's typically not a, not a conflict unless they're representing you and representing them.
Well, I know with that, I was at one meeting where one of the gentlemen stepped out with you and you came back in and I think he at that point said that he wasn't going to be able to be involved or.
And I keep the form B, form that he's AB, that he's talking about right in front of me at every meeting so that we can talk through that and get it filled out right there.
Yeah, never wait the fifteen days, do it right, like after meeting and give it to him when he says it's been done so you don't forget that. It only takes a minute.
So you haven't forgotten all the property you have in Miami?
Yeah.
Or when the guy hits up, you go, oh, I forgot you're my brother.
So, um, the uh, exceptions, if the principal by whom you retain, this is just written in the set, okay? Principal by whom you retain is a public entity, they vote. Had this happen a number of cities where uh we're city attorney, one of the commissioners is employed by the school board. And school board was coming uh before the city commission, something very routine, alright? But nevertheless, this is the school board and um and we're voting on something, you know, that will be to their benefit because they were giving them something. Um, and they talked to her with us, but statute says if you were, basically, if you're employed by a government and a government is going to be a special private, you know, get a special gain or loss at that school. And it's not voting conflict. Why? It's for legislative, for legislative reasons. Um, another one, a measure affects your expenses or compensation provided by law, you can vote. So for example, if your uh city or town is set up such that the uh town commission or city council or what have you uh sets their uh salary by ordinance or resolution, it is not a voting conflict, even though you're going to have a direct financial benefit from that vote. They build that in there because that's a very common way things are set up. Now, we got the flip side of this. Uh, if you have more laws around anywhere.
Have a water fountain, we could show us.
Oh, we almost done?
We are. God, I got. Uh, or it's a dirty business, so we are, we are almost done with that.
Let's do this chart thing. The chart thing, you must be.
Yeah.
Our water too low.
When it comes to voting conflicts, uh, we've got a related issue, kind of the flip side of you. We were just talking about when you aren't allowed to vote, when you've got to abstain and will bring up a vote. But law of law requires, chapter two eighty-six, requires members of the collegiate body to vote when they're present at a meeting. It prohibits abstain- abstaining except when there is or appears to be a possible conflict of interest. See some slippery lawyer words in there? There is or appears to be possible, okay? So let's back up, let's break this down a couple different ways. So first off, what does this generally mean? So first off, what does this generally mean? It means there's no voting present in Florida, okay? There is no, this decision's really hot, uh, everyone's gonna hate me for whatever decision I make. Um, so I just wanna choose not to vote. That is not an avenue available for anybody elected or appointed on any collegiate body in Florida, alright? However, when you have a situation where there is, alright, certainty there, or appears to be, let's get a little bit more wobbly, a possible conflict of interest, then you are allowed to abstain. Where does this end up getting deployed in practice? It gets, end up getting deployed in practice when, remember that list of relatives? We were talking about how narrow that is. If it happens to be that your first cousin is coming in, your first cousin is coming in and they are gonna be getting a rezoning that they're gonna make three million dollars on the piece of property, what have you. And you were, you know, raised like a brother or sister with that first cousin, alright? And you know it's gonna look forward to be voting at, um, you know, on that rezoning. This provision would allow you to say, hey, look, I've checked with the town attorney, technically, um, you know, the applicant, my first cousin's not in the list of of relatives, but it certainly appears to be, you know, to reasonable person, a conflict of interest, alright, it's, it looks too much walks like a duck and quacks like a duck. So I am going to uh refrain from voting for this matter. Again, this is not an escape hatch for, it's really hot, I don't wanna vote on this, it's for situations like that. In addition, and this is gonna segue into our last subject matter. If the official decision ruling or act occurs in the context of a quasi judicial proceeding, a member may abstain from voting on such a matter, if it's intended to ensure a fair proceeding, free from potential bias or prejudice. It's a little odd, and I recommend against using it in the strongest terms, except in the most extreme of circumstances, alright, I'll give you an example. I am mayor in the city, sort of, we're city attorney years ago, had a situation where um, she's very strong creation. As are a lot of people, I'm very, you know, very adamant on on stuff, and this was a matter relating to zoning for uh adult entertainment establishment, okay? And without going into any of the details, it's basically a situation where um, it's a lot of case law about adult entertainment establishments need to be able to go in somewhere in certain circumstances and so on. It's kind of a situation where where they were a little bit boxed in. And she said, look, I know, uh, I know what the law is, I I get it, I like it, but I get it, uh, but and I know what legally the right hamster has to be, but I can't bring myself to do it, because I'm, you know, I'm got too much box in this instance here, so she abstained on that rezoning, quasi judicial uh decision. This should only be used very vanishingly, because what are you telling the public? That was very understandable in that unique instance, but what are you telling the public generally? When, if you ever use that exception, you're telling folks, hey, I can't be fair, I am biased and prejudiced. You do that a lot, it's not saying anything good, so I accept in the most extreme circumstances. Uh, I recommend against even thinking down those lines. Now, that is a good say to our maximum amount we're going to discuss, basics, quasi judicial. Any questions, by the way, on voting conflicts law? Again, it can get really deep in the weeds, big reasons, just put it in front of you all, so that you can say, oh, yeah, that sounds a little bit like what we're, we're talking about. We gotta follow up and chat with the petition. So finally, we're gonna talk about some of the unique requirements for quasi judicial hearings. So, under the law, there are times when a court must be elected for, our staff committee, there'll be a uh planning board as well, uh, act in what we call a quasi judicial act. That is the board acts similarly to how a judge might act in hearing in a case or talk through some of what that means, right? Does not mean you get to wear a robe and a gown and all this stuff. But um, nevertheless, we have to look at it generally the way a judge would evaluate. All matters that come before a board are generally, very general broad characterization here, considered either legislative or quasi judicial. And on given uh decisions, particularly ones that might be contentious, alright, because a lot of this is kind of a um, a risk assessment, evaluation, and how formal in a given instance you might get. Making sure you're ticking every single box, there's a lot of uh concern or opposition, or there's a lot of public interest in something. Might ramp up a little bit and make sure you're doing every single little thing. So, town attorney or town staff may mention in particular matters quasi judicial, uh, since typical rules apply, just to draw folks' attention to it. What's the basic definition of legislative quasi judicial? The very basic thing, can get really down in the weeds, but the very basic distinction is decisions that set general policy rather than implementing or applying policy tend to be legislative. Decisions that apply and adopt a policy, particularly when you're applying and adopting a policy to somebody else's piece of property. Quasi judicial, all of this comes out of a fundamental concept of due process law, alright? Basic idea being, the government, the town, is making decisions about what somebody else is allowed to do with the land, right? So, what the case law says and what is built into all of this is basically, the government's allowed to do that, but they have to afford the applicant, the property owner, due process in making that decision. And that's what's built in all of making quasi judicial decisions. So what are examples of a quasi judicial act that would cover? Various, zoning, site plan rules, special acceptance, additional uses, development rules. Each of these is a situation, like I said, where you're making a decision based on already set policy about what somebody else can do with the land they own, right? In contrast, you got examples of legislative amendments to the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan is the newest thing. Generally, the whole town or whole segments of the town, whatever. They might say, oh, well, you can do a complaint amendment, you know, on a single piece of property, is that legislative or quasi judicial? Interestingly, you would think it would be quasi judicial. It's what most local government attorneys thought the answer would be, basically the explanation I just gave you just a minute ago. Fourth Supreme Court actually says that it's legislative, which means that governments have more latitude, not complete latitude, but more latitude in that decision making. Why they decided that way, that's for the fourth Supreme Court to explain, but that's with the laws. Amendments to the code of ordinances, again, general applicability, setting policy supposed to apply. Amendments to the land development code, budget matters, resolutions, purchasing decisions. Vacations of right of way, now, vacation of right of way, you might say, oh, that's uh has to do with a particular piece of property, you're not applying policy, you're not uh making policy, you're applying policy. But vacation of right of way, what do we do? We're getting rid of the towns front, right? Completely different matter, it's gonna affect the property next door or what have you, but we zero in on um, the particulars of these different types of uh decisions. Or donations, another example, uh, a uh, temptation, basically, estimate and so on. Now, that due process, we were talking about, for one of the components of that, particularly again in situations where things uh might be contentious uh and so on, best practice uh is making, when you've got a quasi judicial matter coming before you, is for board members or commission members to disclose any ex parte communications um, concerning the matters coming before you at the quasi judicial here, okay? Uh, in particular, at the beginning of the hearing, all that, board members should disclose any contacts or information they've received prior to the hearing, okay? And sometimes it's like in general, hey, uh, you know, received a number of emails from the community, some of them say they're okay with this, some of them say they're they're silly guesses. If you met with the developer, okay, and listened to the developer, it would be appropriate to disclose it, right? Um, if you met with a number of residents who wanted to tell you this is bad or whatever, disclose that, right? Um, couple of things, one, disclosing that puts the town in a better position legally to defend the decision of your board or commission, like, that's what all this is about, okay? And related to this as well, when you're making your decisions on quasi judicial matters, board members should not be using information that is not disclosed at hearing as the basis for alright, remember we talked about, like, uh, act like a judge. Quasi judicial proceedings are not formal when, like, you would be in a regular court, so they're court proceeding, but they're more formal or it can be, again, particularly when you're gonna have contention, uh, there's some other types of meetings. The most important piece to keep in mind uh when it comes to quasi judicial decision making is that your decisions have to be made on a basis, what we call competence substantial evidence. Fact-based testimony or evidence is the all support that can be considered uh when a board is considering its duration of voting on the items. So basically, you have to imply facts that are introduced, say it. And this depends members of the public and other folks sometimes, but rely on facts, my feeling, and the rules, now, we wish the rules worked, okay? The time for making the rules different is when you're doing legislative things, changing the contract, changing land development regulations, changing the ordinance, not in the middle of a quasi judicial hearing. So, pure speculation or mere opinion, not based on competent fa- facts, can't be considered by the board members in way they're deciding. Sometimes, members of the public can give up, get up and give testimony as to uh, you know, pure fact-based matters, not just conclusions of this is, uh, you know, this is gonna ruin our way of life or. Um, sometimes, you know, lay testimony that has fact-based support, you know, can support that. But I would, I would say this really boils down to, if you really wanna know what the gist of all of this is, quasi judicial hearings, as much as uh we as folks who, you know, believe in doing the work of the people and, you know, democratic values and so on, quasi judicial hearings cannot be a popularity contest, and a decision cannot be based on the number of people who are at the meeting going against a proposed. What if you think about, put yourself in a different situation? Imagine you're in a courtroom, part of a judge, and that judge made a decision on something, you're in front of the judge, or based on how people were for or against it sitting out in the gallery. How would you feel about that? Either way, but particularly if it went against you, not the the way you wanted to think. Now, might think, well, this has to do with the whole town or whatever, but remember, you're talking this instance here, quasi judicial decisions, not all the decisions of the town. They are decisions that the government, the town, is making about somebody else's property and what they can do with it. And so, law of law has said over the decades, you have to afford certain rights of due process, and in particular, making a decision based on the facts and the law, not based on where people want things, based on the popularity you want to have, some people are for this. Now, the time for uh for or against what have you, that is a perfectly reasonable basis for making changes to the comprehensive plan, do the land development regulations, do the rules that govern this, but not when you're in individual decision making, individual piece of property.
So wait, can, yes, can I?
Please, soon.
So, and we're doing a rezoning on a piece of property and we open it up for the public. And people get up and they're just saying how they feel about it, or how should the board chair handle that?
So, both are, thank you very much, because I wanna make it distinctive, alright? Between what folks will allow to say in a meeting, and then what you as members sitting on a board or commission are allowed to base your decision on, alright? Folks are allowed to, and they have, they have a right to get up and tell you how they feel about it, okay? So I do not wanna discount that, I want everyone internalize this. Folks are allowed to get up and tell you how they feel about a project. That's, is not, I'm not telling you others, they are allowed to, frankly, they have a right to get up and tell you how they feel about the matter, this is, as we say, this is why you guys get paid the big bucks, right? This, this is one of the hard parts in in what you all do for the community is uh folks they tell you how they feel, you can't make your decision based supported just on how people feel, right? So, folks are allowed to say it, they're allowed to say their piece, alright? Um, but that can't be the basis for supporting a, for example. There are all sorts of things, by all, that can support a denied, you know, given project. This is not a categorical statement that every single project that ever comes through, it's, it's gotta be approved and whatever, by no means. All I'm saying is, it's gonna be a deny, it's actually our last slide.
So, but if, if somebody wanted to come in, they wanted to build a chicken farm across the other side of town square, and they have every legal rights to build a chicken farm across town square, it checks all the boxes, but ninety percent of the town says we'd want a chicken farm across town square. As a member of the board, you're going through the process, and you're sitting there and you're looking at, it checks all the boxes legally. You've gotta get a thumbs up, or else you get sued, right? They could, the property owner could sue you.
Yeah, property owner could sue, and that's a, that's a great way to put it, because I will tell you, and I, you know, encourage this as all. Of course, I've seen it around the state where there would be situations where given projects, um, you know, denied, just apparently, we never, you know, confirmed publicly, denied for reasons other, other than it checked all the boxes or not. And then some folks just say, bah, humbug, I don't wanna deal with these people, and they just leave, they don't, that happens, okay? Folks, some folks are just driving away. Um, does not happen nearly as much as folks who don't wanna give a project would like. More than often, they are going to seize on the fact that you, you know, denied for a basis of that, right? The issue, and this is why, this is why the work that each of you do on each of these boards, okay, is so very important on the legislative stuff that I was talking about there. If you don't want a chicken coop, right, right in downtown, make sure your code is such that your, your cop plan and your L D R is such that it wouldn't allow a chicken coop in downtown.
So, chicken farm or coop could be, could be, could be construed to, you know, maybe multifamily. But if it's allowed, it's, it's allowed there. Now, like you said, on the, that's quasi judicial, obviously, but to make policy a cop plan amendment would need to be in place.
No chicken farms.
To say, no chicken farms anywhere in, in town square, right, or or whatever.
And that, so that would.
That would be a legislative policy that you would set, and then, then the, the property owner, you could, you could get ahead of that maybe, right, knowing that possibly, hey, somebody could build a chicken farm in this way, we need to change it right now.
Your whole, your whole comprehensive plan, your whole set of land development regulations is, among many other things, a, you all have the time getting ahead of them, all manner of different things that you wouldn't want here for decades of. a, you all at the time getting ahead of them, all manner of different things that you wouldn't want here for decades of
Correct.
Uh, uh, not just experience here, but the experience of your planters and other folks from other places, knowing, yeah, you don't want this here, when it's the type of things you want here and so.
Right.
And so, the bigger picture in, you know, you want certain things, you don't want certain things, where you implement that is in your legislative, your plan.
And the reason I say that is I know that times change, and back, you know, fifteen years ago, it could have been a one way of thinking, and then now something's different. So you have to kind of roll with it, and, and that's where you have to get ahead of the, the program so that you're not stuck in a spot where you have to approve a chicken farm. So.
So it worked in the first too, when we, way back when, when we did all that, we had to pull stuff out.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely, and I'm not, I'm just, what I'm trying to say is.
If you're sitting up here and you got the whole town yelling at you, saying, don't approve that, don't approve that, what has it? But, you know, I sit there and I say, I sit there and I look at it and I say, well, look, the guy checks all the boxes. And then if I were the owner of that property, and I were doing it, and I did everything I, I legally needed to do to get that chicken farm approved and built, because it's my livelihood, and you're gonna sit there and deny me because you don't want a chicken farm, well, I am gonna call my attorneys and they're gonna, they'll come happy to sue you. So then you get the way out, well, is it worth the town getting sued? And having to pay millions of dollars to this guy because you killed his livelihood, or is it, hey, unfortunately, we have to do this? Maybe, yeah, yeah.
Well, and that's a, a challenge, a challenge too, that goes back to, like, you know, there's a couple of private Facebook groups that are you know, have the Oakland name in, and they're geared towards people that live here, but they have nothing to do with the town, and a couple of things happen. One is, I think our communications folks handle it really well, because they tag the town looking for answers on those things. And then I think the other thing too is when we have people come to the commission meetings that don't understand that we can't arbitrarily say, no, you can't do that here, because if it's, again, if they've checked all the boxes, we, you know.
And I just use chicken coop.
Yeah, I would have to move boxes, check. What that attorney did say, fall into the box of the developer saying, this is gonna be very difficult to put this chicken coop here or this chicken farm here, because they're making me do beyond
Yes.
the normal, and if they put so many roadblocks, then I might just go put this farm somewhere else.
Right, and that's, but so, that's happened, uh, you know, it happened down on, uh, where the developer said, I'm signing Joe, whether it's not worth the time, I'm making a do time things. But then you think about Race Track, they stuck with it, they stuck with it.
But that's, that's, but, but again, as commissioners, y'all can't just, in the ma-, you know, the mayor and the commission, y'all just can't say, we just don't want them here, if they've followed all the
Oh, no.
And I'm seeing some of the attorneys at some of the meetings that every time somebody throws something out there, they immediately respond and say, well, we're, we're, this is all in your
Right.
town plan.
There should be no, if being on a board, there should be no reason why you can't sit there and go, hey, no, this isn't, because it could, you know, it, you know, it could, it doesn't die with you, it dies with the
Right.
But there should be no reason, I mean, indication, you could push back, and then they could sit there and second, start thinking to themselves, well, if these guys aren't gonna take it, then what's the chances of?
Plant a seed early, plant a seed early, so they're like, I don't think they're gonna like this.
As you go up on a sunny way, we're on, on city, that development.
Right.
And like, they, they wanted to continue pushing all the, the wall now, we want the wall to
Right.
It's, I mean, it, it's the price of doing business here, and you can make it as high or as low as you want to.
That's a hundred percent correct, correct.
Well, and I know too, and, and again, the meetings, you know, again, pushing those back and asking for those things, and, and they can decide whether it's worth, and their effort that's received.
Yeah.
And I guess the biggest final, uh, uh, bit I would offer on that discussion there is just keep in mind the, the absolute importance, these important issues are placed to make these things happen, see what requirements are gonna be, is on the legislative side. Plan it appropriately, because we get to the point where we're, we're down in the weeds on a particular project. Yeah, very limited, very little to note latitude to work around, take the boxes, this is not check the boxes, but if you have that latitude, it's on the list.
Right.
So, to finish up, if they're going to be in denial, they are motioned others, it's for denial, have to state their reasons for denial, and set out, what's the evidence before you that supports denial, what's the relevant law? What LDR provisions does, what boxes does it not check? What LDR provisions is not compliant with, what health program divisions is not required? Any questions?
So, let me, let me ask something, just to make sure we're, we understand it right, and this thing, so chicken farm, Zach sits on the chairs of planning his own. And Zach and I, I'm walking my dog down the street, Zach pops out of his house and says, hey, Aaron, how are you? Hey, um, you know, that chicken farm's coming in front of the P and Z board, and you know, I really like the chicken farm. I'm gonna vote, yeah, just to let you know. Now, at that point, he sits on a different board, should I say, don't, don't talk?
I wanna thank you very much there for bringing this up, because this sort of back to something I've brought up before. Remember I mentioned, um, that from a shut-in law perspective, no problem with members of two different boards chatting about different matters. But we have quasi judicial now, alright? What you're gonna end up with is situations where, let's, let's take your, your scenario, right, on different boards. Yeah, the chicken, the chicken farm are coming up, and actually, um, the, um, you know, planning board member, P and Z member, going to the mayor and saying, hey, I'm, I'm in support of it, I'm gonna vote for, okay? So, no ex, in just that alone, no expert communication from the mayor to you, so you don't have anything to disclose in your planning board meeting, alright? However, if anybody, he would have to, this is where it's gonna, if I would strongly suggest in any quasi judicial decision making that you're going to be making, do not make pronouncements, categorical pronouncements that you're for or against some project before, I'm just before you even hear it, okay? You can, if you feel the need to, generally say, uh, you know, and I'm excited to review the project, things like this, or, you know, in vague, vague.
He's waiting to you.
Is pre-judging the hearing, alright? Imagine if you had a, a hearing in front of a judge, right? And that hearing is gonna be next Tuesday, and then you heard, um, uh, somebody heard the judge down at Publix talking about the hearing that's gonna come on Tuesday, and said, oh yeah, I'm gonna rule against that again, before the hearing's even heard. What would you think about that? You wouldn't think you were getting due process, would you? You wouldn't, you're not getting a fair shake. Now, we are all human beings, we all look at the packets, we look at the stuff, and you're, in your own head, you're gonna think, man, this is nonsense. Or, man, this looks great, okay? Y'all are human beings, I'm telling you to not be human beings. What I'm telling you to do is, do not create an easy record, you know? Put out there publicly, so that, uh, there's a record, if somebody disagrees with, doesn't like the decision you made, they can be looping out with a quote, you saying, two days before the hearing, this guy says he's completely against the thing, he's against the thing before you ever even heard the evidence I put on him here. That's absolute, that is throw out the decision and, you know, the one loses, alright? So, when it comes to quasi judicial matters, the problem becomes not a sunshine, but if you tell the mayor, hey, I love chicken farms, you know, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm voting for this chicken farm, that all might be well and good if everybody's favorite chicken farm, nobody cares. But if it comes to be that a lot of people hate the chicken farm, right? And you tell him that, and then the mayor, being studious, says, yeah, I had an expert communication, you know, so, so at the, uh, planning board, you know, shared with me that he supported, uh, a, um, uh, supported the, the chicken farm. Oh, the mayor, when, when, when did he tell you that? Oh, three days before his hearing. Oh, okay, and then that ends up, the court document saying, at the planning board stage, they didn't get a bear shit. Okay, so you're having only for or against something, putting down categorically on video, on audio, on Facebook, or in email, in writing, some concrete way that you are for or against a quasi judicial matter, but in particular quasi judicial matter that might be challenged, is only setting it up to get the opposite of what you're in favor of. It's setting you up to have whatever side you're in favor of get reversed. This is why sometime, very often, folks are a little cagey, uh, stating how they feel about something before the hearing. It's so that there's not any documentary evidence of them being categorized against some project, whatever, alright? I've seen innumerable cases where folks have come in on quasi judicial matters, saying, I'm against this project, whatever, and that very email to a member of the, to a citizen, member of the public, ends up becoming exhibitant to a search and order, um, petition, challenging that decision, giving it the opposite, against the law.
What if it's not board with board members, and it's actually the chicken farm person poking around? Saying, hey, how would you guys feel if, you know, or knocking down one of the board members and saying,
Right.
Hey, you know, I was thinking about putting a chicken farm, well, how would you feel about a chicken, how do you like your omelets?
No, this is very good question, so, you gotta look at, this, this, it's a great question, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take your example, I'm gonna run it. So, um, before somebody's ever submitted an application, right, they're not an applicant, just, uh, let's say it's just somebody coming around the town looking to develop something next. And they come just to inquire of appropriate decision makers, hey, how do you feel about X, how do you feel about Y, right? You can share your general feelings on, okay? Um, and if that comes back, again, this all becomes factual messes, alright? They try to, to come back and say, you know, before I ever submitted an application, so and so said they were against this type of thing, and then later they voted against me, it's gonna be a lot weaker sauce, alright? And, um, you telling, putting it out publicly or a member of the public three days before a fully formed application is being heard before your, your, before the commission on a quasi judicial hearing, okay? Not telling you, you all have to be news, you can't have opinions on things generally, opinions on, you know, the way you, way you think the town should be developed. It's your job to have opinions on how, you know, the town should be developed. I would urge you to express that, that opinion most correctly in your legislative. But if folks generally, way before they're an applicant or anything like this, asks for, for your general vibe or inclination on something, there's nothing inherently wrong with it, it gets more and more of a problem when someone becomes an applicant. That helps.
Yeah.
How might we know if someone is an applicant, uh, like, just general discussion, right? Like, maybe someone that, I, I work in Winter Garden, for example, um, maybe someone finds out that I uh, sit on the ARB review board here, I don't know that they're an applicant per se, and they wanna know how I feel about a new baseball throwing situation on fifty. At that point, how would I know if they were an applicant and they did not?
You could all, yes, that's, I, that's not.
Okay.
The, the matter is, I, I would, I would be, um, a little more cagey if someone comes to you outlining a very specific proposal, you know, hey, how would you feel about, you know, this exact project on this exact piece of property and, and whatever?
Yeah.
Um, well, that's to telegraph something different to you than, hey, you know, how do you feel about chicken farms?
Yeah.
You know, the mere, the mere fact that, that somebody responds, I hate chicken farms, is not gonna be strong evidence that they're going to, uh, vote against a chicken farm, even though all the boxes are checked. You see what I'm saying? That, that, I, I wish I could give you Brett line rules, some of this stuff, but it's, it's not going to be. It's exercising judgment, and I'd suggest stay a little bit far away from speaking about particulars.
Quick question, um, I'll use the chicken farm example. Guy wants to put a chicken farm over there, but it's not zoned for a chicken farm. But, so they're coming in here and they want a zoning change. How far can we dig into all the details? The, what they're gonna actually do with that property? Cause I feel like we've always gotten, the, the first step is they come here for a zoning change, we might not have all the details of exactly everything they're gonna do, and I feel like I think we should have all those details, because why am I gonna do, give them a zoning change and give them the upper hand?
A, a good question, very good question, and here's the very important thing you should always remember when you're looking at zoning changes and future land use changes, right? And of course, these are technically different standards. Future land, uh, designation of these properties can be legislative decision. Uh, zoning should be quasi judicial, but each of these is, you're wrong to go. While it is common in a lot of places, folks will prove it and say, hey, I want a rezoning, because I'm gonna put, um, you know, this really nice, right? If it's straight zoning, it's going to be difficult, right? As opposed to say, a PUD, uh, you know, PUDs, if it's coming in for a straight zoning change or looking like this, it should not be evaluated. Staff will buy board members based solely on whatever the heck they're telling you, that they're, they're planning to use it for right then. When you're changing the zoning on a piece of property, you're saying, anything that is permissible in that zoning district is going to be permissible to go on that piece of property. See what I'm saying? So, um, I, I've certainly seen instances where there, there might be a development, you know, for a, a single thing coming in, to be corporate, whatever, and they say, hey, we want a rezoning, because we're gonna put this type of thing here, and that's the only thing they do. And then they get the rezoning, and then they do that, they follow through, right? They don't, there's no switcheroo, you know, whatever. Um, I've seen more than enough situations where that's not, come in saying, I'm playing to do X. Wonderful, great, we'll give you the rezoning to some other straight zoning. And then, you know, the economy's changed, business changed, now I'm gonna do this other thing that is a permitted use in the list of permitted uses in that zone, and that's going to be okay. Even if they said, I'm asking for the rezoning, it's gonna do X, be able to do Y. Now, and remember, it, this may not even be, because then you listen, it may be, somebody says, I'm gonna come out and get a rezoning, and I'm gonna build X, and I'm gonna do X, and they get there and they do X, and then you have a real estate crash or economic crash, hopefully like we're not having.
The performer doesn't work.
What's that?
Then the performer doesn't work, we could to, I don't know, from ALF to, uh, yeah, 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 for VS, from ALF to multifamily.
Can a zoning be changed with, like, specific requirements? Or it's a resort that becomes a?
I was going to mention this, this, um, the way the rubber meets the road in Oakland is maybe a little bit different, because we see a lot of PUDs here, and so outside of the context of straight zoning, PUDs is where it, it allows the government and the developer to engage in a negotiation process where they write zoning code essentially that will apply to that property. So, if you're interested in what's going to happen down the line, uh, I would recommend taking a hard look at that development agreement and what uses does it allow.
So, in that developers agreement, it, it will outline, you're allowed to do a hundred and twenty-seven ALFs. You're allowed to do, and that's it, that's the agreement you have made with the town. So, to me, that's, a, a contract is binding, and, and it's tighter than just saying, we're gonna zone that commercial from resident, from agricultural.
Then you've opened.
And then there's a whole list of commercial uses that could go there versus Versus that contract I have with that developer that says, you're, told me you're gonna build this, you're, I don't care if the economy crashed, you're, you told me you're gonna do this.
It's, it's why PUDs, uh, planning developments or planning developments are. Very effective tool in avoiding some of these issues. Sometimes though, folks are going to come in and, you know, I'm gonna do straight zoning, so and so you just have to be legislative work. Mind, what do your zoning districts allow?
Cause that's always.
So you said, so we need to be more careful if we're just doing a straight zoning change rather than a PUD.
Say that again.
So we gotta be more careful if we're just doing a straight zoning change rather than a.
I think, I think, yeah, you wanna be, you wanna be careful in each and every place. Um, so yeah, you, the, the care you want to look at on a rezoning in particular is gonna be looking at. Um, it's not just the use that they're saying it's gonna be to be in. Now, I do want to mention that rezonings are not done in a vacuum, alright? This is widely important. Y'all recall, in your work on, on all your boards, you got at least two layers, regulations. We've got the base layer, the, the. Uh, fundamental layer is the comprehensive, alright? Then we have the land development regulations on top of that, and so, alright? So to give a piece of property a future land use designation, that's gonna have a broad category of uses that's allowed in. And then the zoning, uh, designation or PUD zoning specifies these exact uses. That's where it gets down in the weeds to say exactly what it's going to be. So keep in mind that somebody has a piece of property where the future land use designation already said that. Things like chicken farms, uh, is, is what can go in this area. Hands could be a little bit tied, because you're probably not gonna find a zoning designation consistent with that, that doesn't say a chicken farm. Yeah, piece of chicken.
And we even have one more, because we have the design district, plus the, the rest too, because sometimes you have overlay districts like designer.
And I think, Rick, what you're talking about is, when you see these, you wanna see as much complete plan as you can. But I think when people are coming in to do that zoning change or whatever. Um, in my world at least, um, you're doing that to get the entitlement rights. So you can make that piece of land more valuable and then as a developer sell it to that guy that will. Come in and say, well, hey, I've got entitlements for you to build. You know, four hundred units on chicken coops on, you know, and, and, okay, I'm buying that piece of property. And then, then the whole negotiation will probably start from there with the developer's agreement and all that stuff, so.
So it's, it's really the legislative side, right, looking at your, our land development code. If you go into each type of zoning and see what's applicable, like, we don't allow car lots, we don't allow those kind of things, right? Go through there, if there's changes that need to be made, that's where they need to be made.
Townhouse pretty stringent zoning regulations, and that's why a lot of PUDs do come through the process too. I know there's not a lot of uses that are allowed under a lot of these zoning, you know, like car lots and drive-throughs and, uh, car washes, we don't allow any of that, so. Um. They're pretty stringent as they are, but if you look at this deep zoning classification, you can see the prohibited. And they allow uses underneath for the straight zoning. But maybe a good discussion having the P and Z board to brag on a, kind of show over. A basics of zoning and land use and compact plan and all of that. Might be good to do that at a separate meeting.
We're good, any other questions? Thank you all very much, thank you.